The East Platteville Township Public Meeting. All participants are now informed that this meeting is being recorded. This meeting is also being offered virtually, utilizing Zoom, which is a cloud-based platform for remote video and audio conferencing. The Zoom application is free to the public. The general public is therefore able to join the meeting by connection through meeting room or by phone. The board is also able to observe the meeting as much as we can. Please continue to check the township website calendar for any updates related to these public meetings. Objectives for these public meetings will also be available on the township's website. Please be reminded that this meeting is being video and audio recorded, and will be posted to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. The meeting will now proceed with the chairman calling the meeting to order and identifying all other members present in the meeting room, and those joining the meeting via Zoom. The chairman will then confirm if those members joining can be heard.
Okay, welcome everyone. We'll call the February 11th meeting, the Planning Commission to Order, and we'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance to the Plan. A pledge of allegiance to the plan, the States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, we have here as Planning Commission members, you know, Philip Barlam, John Thompson, Jansen Herr, I'm Randy Patterson, Sarah Ryder, and Jason Dagan, and then Tara Hitchens from the staff, and Lee Obitz also from staff. No one on Zoom, I take it? So we will move to the approval of the January 14th minutes. Just a note, I asked Tara to make a couple minor corrections, but I did ask her to add specifically that Jansen's nomination as Secretary for Second, it might be. Just for the record. So, other than that, if there are any other corrections from the Planning Commission members, not motion to approve? Make a motion to approve the minutes with a change noted. Is there a second? There are seconds, so motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? So do you ask? We will then move to old business, which is the Morris Smucker and Register Parks and Development Plan number 2024-19. If you will introduce yourself, whatever presentation you wish to give to the township, the Planning Commission members, and then we'll go through the David Miller.
My name's Matthew Mack with Mack Engineering. I was here, I believe, in December before the board, we talked about the plan. And that was the first time you guys saw it. Since then, we went back, worked with David Miller, lessened the letter a lot, and resolved a lot of the concerns, and got some support for a lot of the waivers that we were talking about. In addition, I think we talked about a whole long time, looking at the entrance to 2008 Horseshoe Road. We are now providing a sixty-foot right-of-way at the entrance, we're not asking for a waiver there. We are asking for deferral of the curb, sidewalk, and widening. We do pick on the plan, we provided a blow-up of that for your request. There's really a little paving because the driveway's so wide, and then we talked about how to position the sidewalk around that existing building. The letter, David Miller, actually improved or revised the plans, very minor comments, actually, the unit of advice, I haven't seen today, highlighted. I'm happy to deal with the revolving, so if there are any questions.
There aren't that many, so yeah, the waivers and modifications. Zoning, we don't really control zoning, but there are those comments there that you would obviously need to address. But there are a couple ones under subdivision and land development. Well, again, from my perspective, you're prepared to address those comments?
Everything was touching them very correctly, and already been updated. So under subdivision, number one, all it is, is we had to add another cheap one. That is, the existing house, there'll be an existing house and farmland, and there's two parking spaces required. So we added that, that's a will comply. Number two is the DAP planning module. There's been recent changes at DEP recently, we were increasing the flows out there, the same number of employees, but we're requested to actually submit the mailer to ensure that that's still the position. We're fine with that one. Number three is, we did submit the escrow, there were some additional minor revisions that they wanted in the escrow. Number one, about the sanitary. We did testing, we actually updated the plan to add the note and show the easement for the area tested. There was a, the report was actually accurate, there was some typos between the base and the detail. We actually, between the last time we were there, we were looking at moving the basin around, we ended up putting it back to where we verbally tried to update the actual Horseshoe Dock. So that's been all updated. Number two is the ENSMPS, we'll comply with that, and number three is just the O&amp;M. So I think the main issue with this, what I'm really good tonight, is for the waivers, there's several, but we've talked about.
One point, a comment that came up when I took our last meeting, it's just about the road. Back and the potential timing of widening, widening that road, is there any progress from there?
So we found the old plan from another engineering firm that had the widening on there. In addition, we also reached out to DMA to verify if it needed to be widened. And they, I brought the email back, there was no section that required that to be widened. In addition, we, since last time we were here, we secured support waivers from fire, ambulance.
Questions from members of the town? Any questions from the public, or comments from the public? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to act on Plan 2024- Third letter from DMA, we have the January 7th letter from the White's County Plan Section, which I forgot to mention.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of Plan 2024-19. 2008 Horseshoe Road, provided that they comply with the January 23rd, 2025 DMA level. As well as, you want me to go through all the? And the January 7th, 2025, Lake Street County Planning Department letter. And all of the waivers, just do you want me to go through the waivers?
Just mention that in defer, agreements necessary for those that are being deferred.
Okay, and for the items that are being deferred, a deferral agreement would be required with the township.
John, he seconds that motion, any final discussion among the Planning Commission members? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Prepare to go now quickly. On our agenda, we'll be, Kristen and Katie Stoltz, who's subdivision plan, might have disagreed, agenda yes. 2024-32, 2198 Hobson Road. Do you have to do it yourself, or do you just look at that?
Evening, I'm Brian Mastin from Regester Associates. On behalf of Chris Stoltz, at the state of the city. You have seen the scheme of what's going on there. With two farms in play there. Chris Farm, is lot one. And all we're doing there is we're adding cars away, which is the 2.25 that I mentioned. Do you back on, do you back on 54 to about 56? The other farm, which is lot two and three, that we're splitting. Leaving all buildings on one side, the other side's gonna be vacant ground. Lot three will be vacant ground, it'll have twenty acres. Little warp, and the lot two with all the buildings, that'll have about twenty. We've gone through one go-around with David Miller's review. Plan that's up there actually addresses ninety-nine percent of the comment. One comment, we have a meeting tomorrow with Tara about the stormwater. The creek that runs down to Chris's farm. We've got work with the town of Falls. And Tara, you follow us through there. There are some waivers, it's a typical plan. Preliminary plans. And we're in agreement, just like last. No one's proposed additional right-of-way, that's on this new plan. And we're asking for deferral of providing the improvements.
Or they recommended the denial, you'd address that issue?
Yes.
Now, the township engineer hasn't seen the new plan yet, so.
Correct. Yeah. I had to send through back out and get some more shots on the road to offset that. Right-of-way, for the additional right-of-way, and the typical cross-sections that are shown there. We had to get some shots on the road.
Subdivision land development comments, you will address those comments as well.
Correct.
As well as the stormwater.
Correct, we have a meeting tomorrow. The planning module, Doug actually sent me a sign for me, and Chris signed it. That's gonna go up to DDP once, I'll get that to Tara.
And there were three comments on the county planning departments review.
See them, but they're usually typically means we're.
Notice to revise the deeds for the result lodge to be recorded as part of the plan. Two, the number of subdivision rights renewed. And then third is that they should clarify that road funds, if there are safe stopping distances.
There is one comment on there about the existing driveway in, the existing driveway back to Chris's farm. Feeling there's twenty-five, and the old house sits right out of the road. We've only got about twenty-five feet, if you're pulling out to the right. It's the existing driveway, and that helps me approaches. I sat out there for a while, and I went and talked to Tara, I said, people were crawling down that road at twenty-five. I don't know whether it's because I was sitting in that driveway or what. No. It is what it is for the farm. And you you widen, so you can swing a little wider, you can get out there, you can see. That's the only spot that we didn't meet this, like, original farm, everywhere else.
Hearing any, I will, the public, any comment, any questions? Hearing none, accept the motion, please act on subdivision 2024-32.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of Plan number 2024-32, 2198 Hobson Road. Subject to compliance with the David Miller Associates letter dated January 20th, 2025, and Lake Street County Planning Department's letter dated February 3rd, 2025, and then also to, subject to David Miller's review of the updated subdivision land development plan, and also subject to reaching an agreement with the township on the stormwater issue, and provided that the property owner enters into a deferral agreement. For the.
Catch engineering, subject to an engineering review, is that in there?
They have a motion on the table, so a second?
No second.
And a second for Jason, any final comments, conversation? All the final members. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any vote, motion, theory, unanimous? Next on our agenda, we did get a pinning proposition through the land development plan, number 2025, that we were willing for anyone to stick in the road. Introduce yourself, who you're representing.
My name's Amanda Groff with Harbor Engineering. You worked, played in a piece of paint, which is a great leader, and she grew up to use it. So the property is about one acre, has fronted onto Pitney Road to the northwest. Also has planted onto Millennium Drive, which is a private drive that goes back to the campus. It's within the general industrial I-2 zoning district. The property recently had a residence on it, but that was recently demolished, and there's also a parking area that was recently used as a car dealership on the property. The previous dwelling that was there did have on-lot septic, which has been abandoned, and then it had public water. So for this project, we're proposing to remove the access to Pitney Road and install access through the main drive. And then we'll be sure of the warehouse office, you know, parking for Kane Conservation Group, which is an insulation contractor. They do have an executed driveway that we can go back to access Millennium Drive, since it's a private driveway. And I believe that was provided with the initial submission as well. And the preferred building will be connected to the public center. A new water connection. And then we have a subsurface stormwater infiltration benefit, that's under part of the parking area. And it'll be additional stormwater. So there was a few items that I was gonna discuss from the David Miller letter, but I don't know, do you want me to go through all of them, or talk?
I don't know that you need to know the modifications or anything, in a fair standard. But if you could, through some of the others, it may decide.
I did also want to mention, we did talk to Scott Hain with David Miller this afternoon, and went through a couple of the comments, so we're clear on how to address some of these as well. So we haven't made the updates yet. Have any concerns with the letter in general? So we did talk through a couple of the zoning ones with him, I don't know if you want me to touch on those, or?
I don't think you need to touch on that. Letters be incorporated as being part of the letter, except for the recommendations.
Yeah, we don't have any concerns to address them. As far as the subdivision land development comments, we did get the county planning department letter. We don't have any issues with addressing the, in fact, some of them overlap with the DMA letter. The next couple, two, three, and four, kind of standard, just go off. The planning module, we'll coordinate with the DMS, provide the necessary information for that. The cost opinion will be provided once we get through. We will update the sidewalk exhibit to show the required five-foot placement for the sidewalk that's requested for deferral along Pitney Road. So that will be updated to match that, and then we will add a pedestrian easement for the future sidewalk. Number thirteen, I did want to talk about, under the subdivision land development. So that one's about sidewalks within the site and along parking compounds. So we actually talked to Scott about that, and we would like to request a waiver to not have sidewalks eternal to the site. So in this case, all of the parking will be for his employees, and he won't have any customers to the site, there's not a retail component to the building. So we really don't want to encourage people to come from, or drive into the site, and then even park the vehicle, so you don't feel that's necessary. So we would like to add that. And Scott didn't have any concerns with that.
So Amanda, you're asking for that part of the night, but you'll follow up a letter with the recie, yes, we can do that.
I just, just for my own clarification, so you have a waiver request for curbing along the parking compounds?
Yes, but we missed the sidewalk.
The site, okay.
Sidewalks be required, if you did that, where would you have?
Probably to connect, when we talked to Scott, it would be like to connect from Millennium Drive to the parking spaces. But then we also agreed with the way that the parking spaces are set up, kind of further from the building. You'd either have to add a sidewalk that goes the way around, which we didn't think really made sense, or you'd be walking through the parking anyway.
Mr. Hain, it might help to explain how it would use the building.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's really just housing supplies, and we meet there every morning, load trucks, and so we need the parking lots to navigate, box trucks and a couple trailers. And so the parking spots are just employee parking, they come to the building, we leave for the day, and we return, you know, in the afternoon, so. Yeah, there's not really anything sitting out in the parking lot.
So all your, but then it's sort of inside.
That's the plan, yep, that's right.
Including your, your work trucks.
That makes me see, we'll probably have that are outside.
And the three spaces are the three we have three overhead doors shown here on this side. So they're not loading docks, they're just overhead doors in that area, but the one thought was that they could park a truck and a trailer or a box truck there to load and unload. And that's where some of your vehicles might be.
But it's definitely possible. Assuming we have proof. That would be, yeah.
There's no foreseeable foot traffic, retail or anything like that, you're doing children insulation, so.
And I just want to clarify one thing on the plans. The, it looks like, according to what I was reading, that you're gonna have sidewalks along Millennium Drive, but that they will cease when Millennium Drive meets Pitney. Is that accurate?
They're already there, so there's a little bit that will get redone when that.
Entrance road, yeah.
But other than that, correct, the existing sidewalk basically goes to the intersection of Millennium and.
So the deferrals that you're requesting are just specifically along Pitney, they're not related to any modifications that would be required because of the access drive to Millennium.
And you're showing, I'm assuming that you have straightened that section?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Into the entrance way, will that be straightened for pedestrian use?
Yeah. I think one of the later ones was that.
Perfect impact study?
Yeah, we'll make sure to provide that, so I think we can just provide a trip generation letter to show that we're under the threshold for that. And then the next one, we will coordinate with the fire department, police department, and EMS. The pedestrian easement, if you don't have a long pitney for that sidewalk, especially once we bump that out, to have the five-foot grass strip. And then the vertical curve detail that we had was just for the little bit of curbing work that'll be needed to basically accommodate the access drive to. Did you want me to go through this?
If there are issues, addressing them.
Couple of number just notes here.
Much to go over that.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay, the other thing is just that you're aware, we did include the area of the house and everything associated with that as part of the limits of disturbance, and that's already come down, so. We could have potentially taken some of that out, but we wanted to include that, because that was part of the stormwater calculation as well. I think almost all the stormwater comments are those are clarifications on the plans. The only calculation we really have to run is the drive, but I don't have any concerns with that. Yeah, all things that we can provide to David Miller.
What really changed then from here is that you want us to add for the deferral on the cycle.
A waiver.
Our recommendation of that would be permission to the township.
Submission.
When we officially request.
There was one other thing I wanted to bring to your attention from the zoning, I know it's a zoning comment, but just want to make you aware of it. Double check here. Zoning number six talks about the required number of parking spaces. We do go over about one hundred and twenty-five percent of the minimum required parking spaces, so we would like to request the Board of Supervisor to exceed that one hundred and twenty-five percent. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
It's all related to employee business-related, not public.
And his favor, the group, yes.
I mean, please do that.
Right now, we're five, yes. Including my company, so. I just want to say to you, when you hear installation, we envision it as a clean and attractive building and grounds, so. I know there's some others you may have seen that. This, yeah, we're organized and this should look different, so that's the goal here.
It is, the question is the last, this is a separation between Keener and King, two different companies.
So with them, yes, yeah, completely different. Just happened, and we looked for years for a space, and it just happened to come up next to.
Anything else?
No, everything is handled.
Related to DMA letter. County planning comments do pretty much match. There's none, I will, um, add a pain of motion related to.
I'll make a motion, that we recommend approval of, of plan number twenty twenty five oh one, eighty one Pitney Road. Um, provided that, um. The owner complies with the David Miller Associates letter dated February seventh, twenty twenty five. And compiles with the Lancer County Planning Department letter dated February third, twenty twenty five. Um, and also, in addition to that, recommend approval of the waiver of internal sidewalks. Subject to satisfactory, um. Submission to the township on that issue. And um also recommend approval to exceed the hundred and twenty five percent minimum parking requirement. Um, and then also subject to another developer entering into a deferral agreement. For the deferrals that we are.
Stu's purchase.
Yeah.
And whether, a second. I'm going to Jason, as a second. Any further last comments from planning list members? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Good luck.
Well, but not least, we have East San Peter Towne, the Park Pavilion, number twenty twenty five dash. Okay. You need to reintroduce yourself. You should, just for the project itself.
Again, Amanda Groff of Harbor Engineering, uh, here on behalf of the township for the township's property. Um, so this is for the park at nineteen twenty with Lieutenant Avenue. The park is about nine acres and it's in the medium density residential district. The park has access to Crest Avenue, really simply. Avenue, um. For people drive to the fountain and we'll look at that separately. The baseball field, playing around, walking paths and uh swimming water reason. The current project. Dugout still, like the existing baseball field and then basement and water facility. Um, and instead of doing the stormwater associated with Pavilion directly, just because of the location of that, where we have the stormwater basin off of. The parking lot that's at the northwest side of the site, it'll mean it's part of that existing parking area and access drive. Basically also the Pavilion, and then all of that gets to ultimately the existing basin that's at that southwest corner of the site. Um, the proposed basin, I did wanna mention, it didn't work for infiltration, so it's proposed as a detention facility. Um, it will have some water quality features, we have amended soils in it, um, there'll be some landscape things. But it's, it's not designed for infiltration. Um, we are, there are a couple modifications of the Soudo, pretty standard. And then the only stormwater modification, and then we'll assume we do that along the apartment, because we're not infiltrating. Um, and that was supported by the project geologist, Becker, and she's. That, and I believe, uh, gave. Um, I don't know if the letter, there wasn't really a whole lot, it was just one. A couple of. And a few more things to be added for the existing, um. Existence of the instance there. We also talked to Scott about this briefly, but we didn't have any concerns about addressing.
By the commission, I'm, uh, in a more, it's been a good one. Assuming township, I have an issue with creating an operation management.
This is unrelated to the plan, but who plays baseball here, I'm just curious?
Um, TV baseball plays here occasionally, um, not on a regular basis, like at Flori Park. Um, but there are local individuals that, that views the site.
Okay. Like adult leagues and such?
Um, I'm not aware of adult leagues, but there's, it's local.
Okay, that just play there, but not organized?
Not, not organized, that I'm aware.
Okay, I was just curious about the dugouts.
Came about from, I believe, TV baseball.
Okay.
Anything else? Were you excited? Questions from planning commission members?
Um, and so the pavilion will have like bathrooms and if that's what's in the pavilion?
Yes, so if you're familiar with the. It will be. Close to that design, so open pavilion and then a utility um section in the center and restrooms on either.
Okay.
Anything else? I can't emotion related to St. Peter Township, the Pavilion, plan number twenty twenty five dash. I'll make a motion for approval for. So, the pavilion number twenty, the plan of the twenty twenty five dash, twenty two, uh, provided the comments in the, the uh DMA, David Miller. Or letters are addressed, they deserve to be formally filed. Any last comments from planning commission members? Hearing none, all those in favor, motion, though I couldn't ask for a second, did I?
I'm sorry.
We'll say something.
Oh, good job. Sorry, I'm looking at me, sorry, I forgot something. Last conversation. All those in favor of the motion presented, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you for double duty tonight. Uh, we have a briefing item.
That doesn't mean you're off the hook for next month, though. Not yet.
And, um. Annual report, what's the comment?
Right, so we, we're going to work as hard as we can to get the annual report finalized and to your March meeting. So that it can then go to the second March meeting, which is. We'll make every effort to get that done. Which is, it's a requirement of that's been municipality's planning code, so, um. I like to have it done on time, but. We're a little short staff still.
That's. The, the business, the theory, uh. All right.